Apologies for that, Bill. You can go ahead.
I'm sorry, did you not hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we can hear you.
Did you hear me start the meeting?
Yes.
Yes, we did, yeah.
So can you, could you start the roll then, Kim?
For sure. Thank you. Mayor?
Here, Bill Heinzen.
Office of the Mayor?
Malcolm Kane here.
Controller?
Christian Stenberg here.
Corporation Counsel?
I'm Rachel Barth here.
Office of Management and Budget?
Yvonne Kintian here.
President Borough of the Bronx?
I'm Lucania here.
President Borough of Brooklyn? President Borough of Brooklyn?
Apologies, John Douglas here.
President Borough of Manhattan?
Tommy Vest, present.
President Borough of Queens?
Alan Swisher, present.
President Borough of Staten Island? Let the record reflect, President Borough of Staten Island is not present. Representative Department of Transportation?
Here, Michelle Craven.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just, Kim, do you think the Staten Island rep will be showing up, or are they?
I don't believe so. We've reached out and we have not gotten a response, so I think we're good to proceed.
Okay. And then, Christian, just if you speak later, it's very hard to hear you, so there might be a mic problem on your end, just to let you know.
I appreciate that. I'll speak up.
Thank you. Okay, welcome to this remote public hearing of the FCRC. The hearing being conducted today has been publicly advertised in accordance with the New York City Charter and concession rules of the City of New York. We want to be sure that anyone desiring to be heard has an opportunity to do so. We are registering individuals now for later testimony. Those registered will be called upon to testify after their calendar item has been called. All persons wishing to speak must now provide their name, affiliation, indicate which calendar item you wish to testify on, and whether you are for or against the item at this time. Are we, Kim, are we good on having all the people registered, do you think?
Yeah, so I already have a list of people who have pre-registered through the email address. If you have not been able to pre-register and you would like to register now to speak, please let me know your name, affiliation, which calendar item you're speaking on, and whether you are for or against. Hi.
Just to wear, Belkin, go ahead.
Sorry. Oh, so my name is Nuhar Ansari, and I'm, I'd like to speak on behalf of Friends of the Upper East Side Historic District. And I would like to speak on the proposal, the proposed amendment to the franchise agreement between the City of New York Department of Transportation and J.C. Deco Street Furniture. And we, our position is against this proposed amendment.
This is James Weisman from United's Final Association, and our position is same, same issue, our position is for it.
Okay, great, thank you.
And this is Betsy Plum. I believe I'm registered, but I didn't receive confirmation. I am from Riders Alliance, speaking on the same amendment, and we are for it.
Thank you, Betsy.
My name is Adam Lake. I'm the head of Communications at Climate Group and head of Climate Group MIC. I emailed, but didn't get a response back, so just confirming, testifying, and I'm for the motion.
I'm Larry Janikini, I'm Deputy Director for Program of Operations at Public Art Fund, and we're speaking on the same matter here, in support of the same amendment.
Hi, I'm Casimir Zedanius, Principal of Grimshaw Architects, designer of the bus shelters. We advocate for the bus shelters as a great extension to the family.
Thank you so much. Can you please, can you please repeat your name? I didn't quite catch it.
Yes, I sent an email in. Casimir Zedanius, C-A-S-I-M-I-R, Zedanius, Z-D-A-N-I-U-S. My hands are a little full at the moment, I'm feeding my daughter, so I'll jump over mute. From Grimshaw Architects.
Great, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Julie Chu. I'm affiliated with a public bathroom working group. Currently, we submit a written testimony from Community Board One, Four, and Five in Manhattan. We're for the APT.
Thank you. Is anyone else on the call that would like to register to testify?
Yes, I would.
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Jeremy, my name is Jeremy Woodoff. I'm representing the Victorian Society, New York, and I'd like to speak on the same item, the coordinated street furniture franchise opposed in part.
Okay, thank you.
And my name is David Saltinstall. I'm the Vice President for Government Relations and Policy at the Central Park Conservancy. And we would like to testify in opposition to the street furniture amendment.
Great, thank you. Is anyone else on the call who is not already registered that would like to get on the list to testify today?
This is Barbara Bear from the New York Foundation for Seniors. I believe I'm on the list from early morning, but I just want to confirm that I am.
You are, yes. Thank you, Barbara. You're on the list.
Thank you, thank you.
Hi, this is Steve No Gray, speaking on behalf of 437 Madison Avenue, Sage Realty. I, I sent a message by Friday, just want to confirm I'm on the list.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you please repeat your name?
Steve No Gray, speaking on behalf of 437 Madison Avenue with respect to the proposed bus shelters. We are against it. I submitted a written testimony last week and didn't receive a confirmation.
Okay, thank you. We've got you on the list now. Thank you.
This is Brenda Levin. I just registered electronically. I represent J.C. Deco, and I am in favor on item one.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hi, this is Gabrielle Russell from J.C. Deco. I've registered, I just wanted, I just registered, I just wanted to make sure I'm on the list to speak in favor.
Yes, thank you. I've got you on the list.
Thank you so much.
Hi. I'm Barbara Mutterpohl for Lola Finkelstein. I'm on, I registered, I'm on the list.
Yes, you're on the list, Barbara. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is anyone else on?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt you. This is Alan Sullivan from J.C. Deco. I registered already, but I just want to confirm that I'm on the list.
Yep, confirming, you're on the list. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And then, just to clarify, how many people are speaking for J.C. Deco? And are they speaking in different capacities? Or will they be giving roughly the same testimony?
My name is Alan Sullivan. I will be, sorry Brenda, my name is Alan Sullivan, and I will be representing J.C. Deco. There are other representatives discussing J.C. Deco's position as well that are offering slightly different testimony.
This is Brenda Levin. I represent J.C. Deco. My testimony will be very different.
Yeah, this is Casimir Zedanius from Grimshaw, and my testimony will also be very different.
Okay. Okay, ideally, we would have one, but I understand you're doing different ones. Just a reminder that each speaker is going to be allotted three minutes, and we're going to keep you, we really need to keep you to that. We have a very large number of people testifying. When you testify, we ask that you restate your name and your affiliation, if any. You may also submit written testimony to the clerk, and that will be made part of the record of this hearing. Any written submission should be given to the clerk before the close of this remote public hearing, and that would be via email to the following email address. Which I can bear, CR, oh, sorry, FCRC@mocs.nyc.gov. So that's FCRC@mocs.nyc.gov. And that will be provided to the testimony after the hearing. Will the clerk please follow the first, call the first calendar item?
New York City Department of Transportation, calendar item number one, in the matter of the intent to seek Franchise and Concession Review Committee approval of a proposed amendment to the franchise agreement between the City of New York by and through its Department of Transportation and J.C. Deco Street Furniture New York LLC to install, operate, and maintain bus stop shelters, self-cleaning automatic public toilets, and public service structures, and to install and maintain newsstands in the boroughs of the Bronx, Brooklyn, Manhattan, Queens, and Staten Island. The proposed franchise agreement is requesting to extend the term of the agreement by five years and incorporate additional rights and responsibilities, including without limitation, an increase in the overall number of bus shelters and automatic public toilets that the company may install, maintain, and operate, and the modification of certain revenue requirements applicable to the company.
Okay, thank you. Additionally, changes to the concession documents have been distributed to the committee, and so I would like DOT to now please read those changes into the record.
Good afternoon, Chair Heinzen and members of the Franchise and Concession Review Committee. My name is Michelle Craven. I'm Assistant Commissioner for Citiescape and Franchises at the New York City Department of Transportation. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify today. Proposed amendment to the amended and restated franchise agreement will provide a number of benefits to the city and to New Yorkers. Under the proposed amendment, which includes a five-year extension of the franchise term, the city will receive additional street furniture amenities, as well as stability and maintenance and compensation for the next eight years. Specifically, the amendment includes the following changes. First, the city will be able to install 360 new bus shelters. Sixty of these will be at predetermined locations in Manhattan as listed in Schedule Y. DOT plans to cite the remaining 300 throughout the five boroughs in consultation with the City Council, the Borough Presidents, the Community Boards, and in response to constituent requests. Second, the amendment provides a mechanism for the city to install up to 40 automated public toilets, 20 more than what is authorized under the original franchise agreement. Third, the amendment will insert a 30% MWBE target into the agreement. This target will support local construction companies and other vendors throughout the city. The current agreement contains no MWBE requirement. Lastly, the amendment includes certain compensation adjustments. In years 19 and 20 of the contract, J.C. Deco will pay the city a minimum of $50 million per year. In addition, the city will receive from J.C. Deco 50% of its revenues over $105 million per year. In years 21 through 25 of the contract, J.C. Deco will pay the city a minimum of $35 million per year. In addition, the city will receive from J.C. Deco 50% of its revenues over $110 million per year. In addition, in years 21 through 25, J.C. Deco will provide over $26 million in NYC promotional advertising annually on J.C. Deco Street Furniture in cities throughout the world, and the city will continue to have access to 22.5% of the ad panels locally for NYC promotional advertising and public service advertising. J.C. Deco has a presence in over 80 countries globally, which is invaluable to the city in our efforts to return to pre-pandemic tourism levels. Regarding the five-year extension, the original authorizing resolution for the franchise permitted a maximum 20-year term. However, on May 11, 2023, the City Council approved a new authorizing resolution, Resolution Number 625 of 2023, which authorizes DOT to extend the franchise agreement for five years, bringing the total term of the agreement to 25 years. DOT supports this amendment, including the five-year extension, which will offer numerous benefits to the city and New Yorkers. The amendment will provide additional street furniture, as well as continuity of design and maintenance of such infrastructure. The additional bus shelters will improve the riding experience for thousands of bus riders by providing seating and protection from sun, wind, rain, and snow. The bus shelters, including those listed on Schedule Y, will serve riders from throughout the city. Nearly 68% of bus riders are people of color, and over half are immigrants. In addition, J.C. Deco has been a good maintenance partner to the city, maintaining and repairing street furniture quickly, even under challenging circumstances throughout the pandemic. Finally, I would like to address an issue that has arisen concerning a proposed change to the language regarding electronic media in Section 4.4.2 of the franchise agreement. In the existing agreement, that section reads in pertinent part, quote, "Electronic media will be permitted on a case-by-case basis, and except for backlighting of printed posters, will be subject, except as otherwise may be permitted by the city, to the applicable zoning regulation for the property adjacent to the site." Initially, the proposed amendment would have changed the word "subject by" to "guided by." In addition to, in order to address concerns that this was intended to change the meaning of the sentence, which it was not, the proposed amendment now before you retains the subject-to language of the current agreement and does not make any changes to that sentence. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify today.
Okay, thank you, Assistant Commissioner Craven. We were about, we are about to take testimony from the public, but first I'd like to ask if any members of the committee would like to give a statement. Yes, from the Manhattan Borough President's Office, Ms. Vest.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to give a statement on behalf of the Manhattan Borough President. First, let me start by saying that the Manhattan Borough President fully supports public transportation and investments in infrastructure that serve bus riders throughout the city. The proposed amendment to the Street Furniture Franchise Agreement with J.C. Deco will add 360 new bus shelters, 300 of which are at locations across the city that actually need them. In addition to the new bus shelters, the amendment will provide the city with needed revenue and includes up to 40 automated public toilets, as we've heard from our partners at DOT. Increasing the number of public bathrooms continues to be a major priority for the Borough President. If this agreement stopped there, it would likely have unanimous support, but unfortunately, it goes further, allowing the franchisee to place shelters in areas not based on transit need, but instead based on one thing and one thing only, their interest in generating, generating millions in ad revenue. The amendment allows J.C. Deco to place flashing digital advertisements along sections of Fifth Avenue and Madison Avenue. Without demonstrating that these shelters are even necessary, the Department of Transportation is asking the retailers on these famed avenues, who are still recovering from the impacts of the pandemic on brick-and-mortar retail, to bear the additional burden of having ads and bus shelters placed in front of their businesses, blocking large segments of their storefronts. This amendment also comes at the incalculable expense of visual and physical impacts to one of the city's greatest treasures, Central Park. The proposed bus shelter with digital advertising along the perimeter of the park are unprecedented and will undoubtedly mar the character of Manhattan's nature-based oasis. The Borough President strenuously objects to this timesquarification of Central Park. But the impact on bus shelters is not limited to the visual environment. The 11 proposed bus shelters that the central, that but Central Park pose a threat to the double row of American Elms along Fifth Avenue, which are considered one of the nation's oldest and most significant intact stands of American Elms surviving today. The construction and infrastructure of the bus shelters could damage root systems, significantly impacting the health of these extraordinary trees. The city ought to be fighting to protect these vital pieces of green infrastructure rather than waging their viability on advertising revenue. Though we can all agree that additional bathrooms are sorely needed in New York City, the true benefit of the automatic public toilets is unfortunately difficult to discern, because the amendment fails to guarantee that the 34 new toilets will successfully be sited and installed, and only requires replacement of the existing six once J.C. Deco redesigns the new toilets. It does not address the significant siding issues or infrastructure problems, such as access to power and DEP infrastructure, that currently impede the installation of these toilets across the city. And alarmingly, the franchisee is given a pass on this requirement if they run into challenges beyond their control. In other words, this franchise amendment does not ensure that the city will receive even one additional public toilet, nor does it guarantee replacement of the existing six. The proposed amendment on this, to the Street Furniture Franchise Agreement with J.C. Deco clearly offers some benefits, but at what costs? On Wednesday, the FCRC is being asked to approve a high-value franchise amendment with wide-ranging impacts to the streetscape and public transportation infrastructure across the city when, with less than a month's notice. Given the complexity of this agreement and the lack of consensus, we believe the vote should be delayed, allowing the FCRC members more time to engage with stakeholders and reach an independent determination as to whether the terms are actually a good deal for the city. It's our understanding that the terms of this amendment have been under negotiation for over a year, so postponing the vote for a month should not be a challenge. We also urge the Department of Transportation to conduct further stakeholder engagement before bringing this amendment to a vote before the FCRC. Thank you for your time. That concludes my statement.
Thank you very much, Ms. Vest, from the Manhattan Borough President's Office. I want to note for the record that we are joined by Lauren Lefkowitz on behalf of the Staten Island Borough President. At this time, does any other member wish to make a statement? Okay, thank you. Kim, can you please call the first person to testify?
Yes, thank you. And before I begin, I just want to remind everyone who's testifying that we are holding everyone to a three-minute limit on testimony. And I also want to apologize if I mispronounce your name when I call you. Please be patient, we do have a long list, so we will get to you. If, if it seems like a long wait, I apologize. First, we have Alan Sullivan. Please provide your full name and affiliation for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Alan Sullivan, and I am the co-CEO of J.C. Deco Street Furniture, New York. On behalf of J.C. Deco, we thank the members of the FCRC and your New York City colleagues for their work in connection with this amendment to the Coordinated Street Furniture Agreement. To the Mayor's Office, including Deputy Mayor Joshi's team, OMB, the City Council, the Controller, the Law Department, and the Public Design Commission, we say thank you. Most especially, we would like to thank our partners, partners at the Department of Transportation, Commissioner Rodriguez, both Deputy Commissioners for Dione, and particularly Assistant Commissioner Michelle Craven and her team, with whom we partner every day. We are proud to have provided and maintained to a high standard bus shelter and public toilets to New Yorkers and visitors since acquiring Sunnysur in 2015, and we are particularly thankful to our frontline union workforce who kept the Coordinated Street Furniture Program going throughout the pandemic. We are pleased to respond to the leadership of Mayor Adams and the city's elected officials who recognize the need to provide additional services to New York City bus riders who live in all five boroughs. This amendment will permit the addition of 360 new locations, enabling the city to expand an amenity that provides comfort, safety, dignity, and illumination, as well as shelter in the winter and shade in the summer. The expansion of bus shelters will bring service to millions of New York City transit riders traveling to and from boroughs and throughout Manhattan. Equally important, this amendment authorizes doubling the number of automatic public toilets, bringing the potential total number of this amenity to 40. And there will all be brand-new J.C. Deco units, which are the most innovative and efficient technology available today, whilst also designed to stand the test of time on the city's streetscape. We are excited to work with the city to expand its vital service for New Yorkers. The amendment provides that this program and the daily maintenance operated by J.C. Deco will continue for an additional five years, including during the 2026 World Cup, when the New York area will host eight games, including the final. The city will be able to expand its in-city public service messaging, receiving 22.5% of the new display space, as well as continued access to out-of-city tourism on the only global out-of-home network across 80 countries, an additional value of approximately $132 million. This advertising brings international visitors to New York City, contributing to the economic health of the city in a very substantial manner. We are honored to serve the people of New York City, and we are for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear Edward Wallace. Please state your full name and affiliation for the record.
Ed Wallace, you there?
Yes, go ahead. Oh, sorry.
Why don't we move?
Hi, are you standing by for Ed Wallace?
Yes, please.
One second, I'll give it about 10 seconds, he'll be connected. Please feel free to skip Ed Wallace, come back to him after the next speaker.
Okay. In general, I would just ask that people be ready to testify. I understand people are busy, but all the other people waiting are busy as well. Kim, what's, who's next?
Next, we have Larry Janikini. Please provide your full name and affiliation for the record.
Good afternoon. I am Larry Janikini, Deputy Director for Programs and Operations at Public Art Fund. It is my pleasure to present testimony this afternoon in support of the J.C. Deco Amendment, which will enable more shelters to be installed on city streets. As a leader in our field, Public Art Fund brings dynamic contemporary art to a broader audience in New York City and beyond. Because we are a nonprofit organization, we rely on visionary partners like J.C. Deco to mount ambitious, free exhibitions of international scope and impact. These exhibitions offer New Yorkers and visitors to the city powerful experiences of art in the urban environment, surprising and delighting them while providing inspiration and relevance to their daily lives. Since 2017, our groundbreaking exhibition, Highway Way: Good Fences Make Good Neighbors, J.C. Deco has been an incredible partner for public art because showcasing the work of 75 artists from over 30 countries across the globe, including five solo artist exhibitions and two large-scale group artist exhibitions. Their in-kind donation of advertising space on bus shelters across New York make it possible for us to bring cutting-edge artworks and a diverse range of artist voices to often underserved neighborhoods, and has garnered over $2 billion impressions to date. New York City is known for its culture and thriving arts community. J.C. Deco partners with Public Art Fund to eliminate barriers so that everyone can access amazing art. Together, we are able to offer the public experiences with art that are integrated into the fabric of our city. While waiting for the bus, walking around the city, and going about our daily life, New Yorkers' lives are enriched by these artworks. And J.C. Deco is a tremendous supporter, offering us hundreds of spaces two times each year to bring exhibitions to all corners of the city. The partnership has also grown beyond New York, with its popularity here allowing us to offer similar programming in Boston, Chicago, and in international cities like Abujaan, Ivory Coast, and Mexico City, Mexico. Art inspires us all, and we know that representation matters, particularly when it comes to immigrants, artists of color, trans and queer artists, emerging artists, women artists, and artists of all ages and stages of their careers. When people walk throughout the city, they see themselves reflected in these works and tell us how much art brings them inspiration, restoring their energy, and igniting their creativity. "It's the fuel for our fire," said one young New Yorker when we asked about the power of these public artworks. J.C. Deco has worked closely with us to realize artists' dreams and bring these important voices to the forefront. We know that these opportunities must continue in order to nurture young artists and to foster an ongoing appreciation, ongoing appreciation for the art. J.C. Deco is a champion of public art and a critical partner in building our civic pride and artistic community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have Edward Wallace on the line now? Okay, we'll move on. Betsy Plum, please provide your full name and affiliation for the record.
Hi there, my name is Betsy Plum, and I am the Executive Director of Riders Alliance. Is it okay to begin?
Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is, again, Betsy Plum. I'm the Executive Director of Riders Alliance. We are New York's grassroots organization of subway and bus riders. We fight for better public transit in order to achieve a more just and sustainable New York City. One of our core campaigns is our campaign for better buses. In that campaign, we fight for fast, reliable, convenient bus service that meets the needs of all riders, particularly those who live in areas with poor subway access. After all, while not every part of the city is easily accessible by subway, buses can reach nearly every block. For years, we have pushed New York City mayors to build busways and bus lanes, and we have secured commitments from DOT and the MTA to implement features that making, make riding the bus more convenient, more reliable, more comfortable for riders. These include bus shelters, as we're discussing today, but also countdown These include bus shelters, as we're discussing today, but also countdown clocks, and other initiatives like outdoor boarding. Our Better Buses Campaign makes sure that these commitments are delivered equitably and quickly to best serve bus riders, particularly outer borough riders who rely most on buses. It is with this background and context that I offer our full support for the amendment in front of you from J.C. Deco, a proposal that among multiple improvements for city residents and visitors will allow more shelters to reach more riders, and that is important. Bus shelters are a matter of basic equity and basic dignity for bus riders. If you go to any commuter rail station, if you go to any subway station, seating is standard, a roof to wait under is standard. Bus riders, however, are often forced to wait in the rain, in the snow, in the scorching heat, often with no cover, nowhere to sit. This has unfortunately been an intentional decision in cities across the country. We know that the legacy of racism is real surrounding public transit, and especially surrounding the bus, a history we are seeing exposed by many of those speaking in opposition today. A bus shelter is a common-sense street design that shows a city cares about all of its residents, not just some. For our members and hundreds of thousands of their fellow bus riders, streets and avenues like Madison Avenue and Fifth Avenue have a real and urgent need for infrastructure to be inclusive. Our street and sidewalk space must be inclusive. After all, the vast majority of it belongs to all of us, not just some of us. Without more shelters, though, in a city with the slowest buses in America, not advancing the amendment for more shelters is an insult to injury. For Riders Alliance, every bus rider should have a bus shelter. The more bus shelters that we can bring to our city streets, the better. I hope that is the same vision and approach of this committee. We offer our full support. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Barbara Bear. Please provide your full name and affiliation for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Barbara Bear. I am the Program Director of Home Sharing for the New York Foundation for Senior Citizens, and I will refer to the, uh, to the foundation. I'm here to testify on behalf of J.C. Deco and the City DOT Application for the Franchise and Concession Review Committee to extend the franchise for five years. The foundation, whose president is Linda Hoffman, is the only nonprofit, nonsectarian organization serving New York City's older adults throughout all five boroughs, housing more than 1,500 residents, and having 35 programs serving thousands of older adults, and employing over 1,000 people. Our mission is to keep people in their homes, and therefore to be able to go out and about. The home sharing program, which is more than four decades old, pairs hosts with an extra room in their home or an apartment with compatible guests. Either the host or the guest must be 60 years old. The New York City Aging Report issued in 2017 set out guidelines for New York City to become an age-friendly city. Part of the purpose of the report was to cite the demographics, which demonstrate that New York City must become age-friendly because the older population is increasing. In a few years, one out of five New Yorkers will be an older adult. Bus shelters and self-cleaning automatic public toilets are supplied free to the city by the franchise that hopefully will be granted. The foundation supports this application, simply stated, "The continued growth of the older population heralds the need for the street furniture." Not only do shelters provide a place for older adults to shelter from adverse weather conditions, but the Deco Company has graciously published information about home sharing in the bus shelters by donating space twice for months at a time to display information about home sharing, which is a simple solution to low income and a lack of affordable housing. Additionally, the public toilets are needed as the older population grows. While other portions of the city may be out on the street, traveling to and from work, the older adult population is more likely to be retired and out and in around the city to do errands and socialize. Older adults deserve the ability to use a public facility. There is less likelihood of going to an office or a restaurant. For these reasons, the street furniture will contribute to an age-friendly New York, and for these reasons, the New York Foundation supports this franchise application, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Barbara Mutter Pearl. Please provide your full name and affiliation, if any, for the record.
Okay, Barbara Mutter Pearl, and I have no particular affiliation. I'm reading testimony from my mother, Lola Finkelstein. This is her testimony. "I am going to be 97, I am legally blind, and I use a walker. I served 30 years on Manhattan Community Board Five, three as chair, which we all know is voluntary. What many people do not know is that a community board is a government agency. Community boards play a vital role in the providing of city services. It's tough but rewarding public work. Bus shelters and automatic public toilets are a great public service, a public necessity. I take the bus and am appreciative every time there is a bus shelter with the essential bench. I applaud DOT for making this application to add bus shelters, especially in underserved communities, and automatic public at a time when the city council and some community boards are requesting them. I cannot imagine anyone opposing the installation of bus shelters, especially shop owners whose customers and employees will benefit. Bus shelters are at the curb and do not prevent window shopping. We need bus shelters, we need automatic public toilets. The day the mayor became the mayor, we became the city of yes. Please say yes to this application, which will be a big plus for the city. Thank you for your consideration."
Thank you, Barbara, and please give our thanks to your mother.
I will.
Next, we have James Weisman. Please provide your full name and affiliation for the record.
Thank you. Excuse me. My name is James Weisman. I'm General Counsel of United Spinal Association. We are a membership organization of 60,000, over 60,000 people around the United States, the vast majority of whom use wheelchairs and have mobility impairments. We would like to speak, we're headquartered in New York City, we have a large chapter in New York City. We'd like to speak in favor of the proposal to add bus shelters. Bus shelters make more disabled people able to ride public transit. When they are unable to ride public transit, they become a problem that is solved by providing access to ride at great expense. People are eligible for access to ride based on, many of them based on weather conditions. If they can't be outside in the heat, in the sunlight, they're eligible for paratransit. If it's too cold, they're eligible, or if it's inclement weather, they're eligible for paratransit. These are people who would use mass transit, but can't be outdoors for that, exposed for that long period of time. Therefore, we do support the proposal to add bus shelters. Adding accessible toilets, of course, is a necessity for people in wheelchairs. There are very few public accessible bathrooms in the city, and this has been a 30-year fight to add more accessible public toilets to the city, and we'd love to see it happen. Thank you, DOT, for bringing this proposal forward, and thanks, City Council, for supporting it. Thanks, Deco, for your support in making the world a more accessible place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Edward Wallace, if you're on the call, we've heard that you're having trouble connecting. You can push star six from your touch-tone phone if you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. I apologize for my technical lack of skill. My name is Edward Wallace. I'm co-chair of Greenberg Charred New York City and have served as outside General Counsel of J.C. Deco for 30 years around the entire U.S., which includes the bus shelter programs in Los Angeles, Chicago. I want to share my perspective on that. Having once served in the city government myself, both in elected and appointed position, I'm very honored to appear before you to speak in favor of the amendments and to thank you for your good public service. Speaking of public service, supported here by advertising revenue at no cost to taxpayers, J.C. Deco has produced, along with DOT, beautiful, well-maintained bus shelters and other sidewalk amenities, but the prior franchisee went out of business for lack of revenue. For some reason that I cannot explain, people in high-ran areas seem to fear bus shelters. Let's call it shelter phobia. Is it the bus riders? Is it the ads? Is it the structures themselves that scare them? Probably a bit of all three, but we are, after all, simply talking about bus shelters. Architecturally sensitive, clear glass amenities serve everyday New Yorkers, sheltering them from snow and rain and intense sun, and providing a seat for the weary. The economics of this free-to-the-city program are very simple. A small number of high-passenger, and I want to stress, high-passenger, high-bus routes, but also high-advertising-revenue shelters support the entire citywide program. So, no one wants advertising where there are no bus routes or no bus riders, but where there are the combination, the perfect storm, if you will, of high passengers, high bus routes, and high advertising revenues. Bus shelters help this program exist. Advertisers like the Gap or Dior want to reach customers. Fortunately, these locations, specifically Madison and Fifth, have among the highest need for shelter service. They have more routes and more riders who go to all five boroughs, so this is not about just local residents. Additionally, they serve tourists from around the world. To put it in a perspective, 15 shelters on retail Fifth Avenue out of 3,500 citywide produce 17% of the revenue that pays for the program, and provides tens and tens of millions of dollars to the city treasury. Sadly, the lack of high-passenger, high-revenue shelters not only leaves the workers from Lenox Hill Hospital and other medical offices up and down the spine of Park Avenue, Madison Avenue, and Fifth Avenue, standing in the cold or in the rain. There is no reason for this. The amendments before you expand the service. 360 new shelters, of which 300 will be dispersed around the city and in the neighborhoods, that do not produce always the highest revenue, but do produce the need for this service. These shelters improve the lives of everyday bus-riding New Yorkers, and they do it every day. Additionally, the program drives tourists from around the U.S. and the world because of the overseas advertising and out-of-city advertising.
I'm sorry, we're at time now. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Julie Chu. Please provide your full name and affiliation for the record.
Hi, my name is Julie Chu, and I currently lead a public bathroom working group comprised of a number of community boards, and we have a written testimony this afternoon from Manhattan, CB1, CB4, and CB5. We are in support of the additional APTs, but have the following suggestions that we hope will make the APTs more successful in New York than it has been in the past 17 years. Number one, amendment to siting requirements. Given all the competition for space in our public realm, which has been made even more challenging with the open restaurants program, we ask the DOT to consider placing the APTs in the rowbed on streets that are permanently closed, open streets, and in the neighborhood plazas created through the New York City Plaza Program. Number two, updates to exterior cladding. The stainless steel and glass exterior of these units has been an issue in siding. The PDC has rejected these units in certain locations because the commission thought the APT's clearance was inconsistent with the surrounding built-up environment. The exterior cladding of the APTs should have options for different locations or be designed so that is appropriate for all locations in the city. Berlin has APTs clad in light beige masonry panels that might be more appropriate than what has been approved in New York City. Number three, siding timeline. We ask the city to schedule installation of the 35 APTs within the first three to four years of the remaining eight years of the contract, as we need these bathrooms now. For review process, we ask the city to revisit and streamline the current approval process for APTs, which requires six levels of approval for each unit. While we want to expedite the siding process, we believe the community input is important, and urge the DOT to engage with community boards in the public bathroom working group on APTs going forward. We do not know what sites the city has considered since 2006, and we suggest that sites that have been proposed will, or will be proposed for APTs, be posted on a website similar to ULP applications postings by the CCP, so the community may review and follow. Number five, sustainability. To further New York City's sustainability goals, in keeping with the city of yes initiative, we ask these units have low-flow plumbing fixtures, LED light fixtures, and be composed of low-carbon materials and incorporate solar panels where possible. Number six, regarding the service contract, we ask that the revenues generated from this franchise be used to service New York City public bathrooms, and suggest that J.C. Deco provide a full-time attendant to go with these units. In San Francisco, APTs are paired with a pit stop program, where J.C. Deco is a local nonprofit to provide an ambassador at each APT to create a welcoming amenity for the neighborhood. Number seven, hours of operation. Currently, the APTs are open from 8 to 8, with J.C. Deco servicing the units at the beginning and end of the day. We ask that hours of operation be extended from 7 to 11 p.m. We ask that the units are usually...
I'm sorry, we're at time. Thank you so much for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Adam Lake. Please provide your full name and affiliation, if any, for the record.
Hello, my name is Adam Lake. I'm Head of Communications at Climate Group, and I've been Head of Climate NYC for the last five years. I have no affiliation, and I am in support of this amendment. Climate Group is one of the largest climate charities in the world. We have offices in London, New York, India, and Europe. Climate NYC is the largest climate event of its kind in the world, and we bring together between 400 and 500 events every year from across the five boroughs of New York City. And they're pleased to have the opportunity to testify today on behalf of Climate Group, and I am testifying in support of the amendment. And for the past four years, J.C. Deco has supported Climate NYC by providing incredibly generous quantities of advertising space throughout the city. Thanks to J.C. Deco's continuous support, we've been able to use this opportunity to showcase New York's thriving community of grassroots activists, campaigners, and volunteers. We use our partnership to create a platform for these people, people whose voices are too often been forgotten, and in particular, we utilize the space that J.C. Deco provides to highlight their campaigning for youth action, support for vulnerable groups, environmental justice, and education. From the start, our partnership with J.C. Deco has been based on the obvious support for fighting climate change. In addition to providing advertising space to Climate Group, they also have become a member of our RE100 initiative. This is a initiative that commits organizations to using 50% renewable energy by 2030 and 100% by 2050. They've also contributed to numerous sessions, panels, and court leadership pieces on the wider role of communications and infrastructure in fighting for climate change. Final piece, as you can hear, I'm originally from London, but now live in New York City. I rely on the bus and take it daily. Public transportation is an essential weapon in our war against climate change. Anything that can make bus transportation easier and more enjoyable is a positive thing. And New York's provision of high-quality bus shelters provided by J.C. Deco demonstrates to New Yorkers and visitors that New York City is committed to supporting public transportation. We feel every bus shelter is a stage. You've heard today from organizations like us that have benefited from the platform that J.C. Deco provides, and so are very happy to lend our support today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear from David Saltonstall, please. Please provide your full name and affiliation for the record.
My name is David Saltonstall. I'm the Vice President for Government Relations and Policy at the Central Park Conservancy, and I am here today to express the conservancy's opposition to allowing commercial advertisements in Central Park, which is integral to the 11 bus shelters that will be placed along Fifth Avenue under this proposal. If approved, this amendment would upend decades of successful legal and regulatory precedent aimed at protecting not just Central Park, but all city parks from commercial exploitation, and impose a devastating physical and visual impact on the park's iconic perimeter. Central Park was created as a respite from the stresses of everyday urban life. Placement of large advertisements that are lit 24/7, some with potential for audio sound, would deal a permanent blow to the historic spirit and purpose of the park. The perimeter around the park is an official and very purposeful part of the park, designed to serve as a threshold from city to nature. That's why Central Park is an official New York City scenic landmark all the way to the curb, not just the wall. As outlined in a separate letter we have submitted, the proposal would also run counter to many of the city's own rules related to the protection of city parks and trees, including: "The excavation and trenching required for the proposed shelters pose a threat to the root systems of all nearby trees, and please understand the uniqueness of these particular trees. The double row of American Elms along Fifth Avenue is in fact considered to be one of the nation's oldest and most significant intact stands of American Elms today." They survive... They survive in part because of the city's strong, longstanding regulations related to protecting street trees, especially when it comes to siting bus shelters and other sidewalk infrastructure. DOT regulations require bus shelters to be five feet from tree trunks, canopies, and tree pits, and three feet from streetlights or traffic signals. Based on prior analyses conducted by the Conservancy, we believe that most, if not all, of the proposed sites for Fifth Avenue would violate one or more of these restrictions and should be eliminated from consideration for these reasons alone. Furthermore, since 1940, New York City has banned advertising signs within view of a public park of one and a half acre or more. Central Park is eight hundred and forty-three acres, and throughout its history has remained a respite free of commercial advertising. For those who would argue that bus shelters are needed along Fifth Avenue to protect transit riders, we note that park benches already line the perimeter, giving riders plenty of places to sit, and the uniform tree canopy provides shade and protection from the elements, comforts that most other city bus stops lack.
I'm sorry, we're at time now. Thank you so much for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Jeremy Woodoff. Please provide your full name and affiliation, if any, for the record.
My name is Jeremy Woodoff. I'm speaking for the Victorian Society, New York. Founded in New York City in 1966, the Victorian Society in America is dedicated to fostering the appreciation and preservation of our nineteenth and early twentieth-century heritage. The New York chapter promotes preservation of our historic districts, individual and scenic landmarks, interiors, and civic art. The Victorian Society opposes the proposed amendment to the franchise agreement that would allow installation of bus shelters with advertising on the perimeter of Central Park. We fully support the June ninth, 2023, letter of the Central Park Conservancy describing the reasons for the Conservancy's opposition. The adverse impacts to this New York City scenic landmark and national historic landmark would be every bit as severe as stated, and it would set a bad precedent for similar installations at the perimeters of other scenic landmarks and parks throughout the city. We note that the draft resolution you are considering states that DOT found the proposed action to be type-two under the City Environmental Quality Review Act and not subject to further environmental review. This cannot be a correct finding. Type-two actions are specified in Chapter Six, Section sixteen, six seventeen point five of the city's Rules and Regulations, and actions of the type proposed are not included. No action that involves physical alterations to a historic site can be a type-two action. Rather, this is an unlisted action, and as such requires an environmental assessment that examines the effects that the project would have on the Central Park historic site. Short-circuiting the secret process by claiming this project is a type-two action appears to violate the letter and spirit of the secret law and regulations. Finally, to depend on the Landmarks Commission's future review of the proposed Central Park locations to mitigate damage is futile. Landmarks repeatedly notes that its review of work in scenic landmarks like Central Park is advisory-only. In recent years, it does nothing more than make suggestions to the applying agency. It chooses never to require changes to design or scope. It leaves the binding review to the Public Design Commission, but the PDC has neither the expertise nor interest to review work in scenic landmarks for historic appropriateness. This leaves important historic park with no entity to ensure that work such as that proposed is architecturally, visually, and historically appropriate and has no adverse impact. For these reasons, we request that you eliminate the proposed shelters within the Central Park scenic landmark from the proposal and/or ensure that a proper environmental review is undertaken. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Gabrielle Brussel. Please provide your full name and affiliation for the record.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the Franchise and Concessions Review Committee and everyone else. My name is Gabrielle Brussel, and I am the chief development officer for cities of J.C. Deco Street Furniture in New York. I am responsible for the daily management of this franchise, and I work with a great team at DOT, as well as many stake, community stakeholders. It is a privilege to provide services on New York City streets, from bus shelters to art exhibitions to public toilets, and a privilege to engage with city constituents to expand those services, including stakeholders of Riders Alliance, the Public Art Fund, the Climate Group, the Working Group on Public Toilets of Community Boards One, Four, and Five, the New York Foundation for Senior Citizens, the United Spinal Association, as well as New Yorkers such as Mrs. Finkelstein, and the wonderful architects at Grimshaw, all of whom are testifying or will testify today. As a third-generation New Yorker who was raised on the Upper East Side and in the Village, and now lives in Long Island City with adult children living in Brooklyn, I am well aware of the balance between historic streetscape and the provision of street furniture, as well as the balance that needs to be struck in a city with millions of stakeholders living such a range of lifestyles and a range of access. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and for the opportunity to hear the many voices of people engaging with public services in our city. I ask that you approve this amendment so that those services may be expanded to people who really need them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Matthew Bauer. Please provide your full name and affiliation for the record. Matthew Bauer, are you on the line? If you're muted, you can push star six on your phone to unmute. Okay, we'll move on. Next, we'll hear from Nuhah Ansari.
I'm here.
Oh, I apologize. Matthew Bauer?
Please give us your testimony, Mr. Bauer.
Sure. Hi, my name is Matthew Bauer. I'm the president of the Madison Avenue Business Improvement District, which covers Madison Avenue between East Fifty-seventh and East Eighty-Six Streets. I've always submitted written testimony regarding some of the concerns of our businesses, but it's really welcome news this afternoon that the phrase in Section four point two point two regarding electronic media is now not being changed, keeping the text that electronic media will be permitted on a case-by-case basis, and except for backlighting, printed posters will be subject to the applicable zoning regulations for property adjacent to the site. From the inception of the Coordinated Street Furniture Franchise Program, bus shelter advertising was explicitly tied to zoning regulations. The environmental assessment statement prepared for this project, Secret Number ninety-six dash DOT dash zero-one-zero-Y, stated that electronic media will be permitted only on a case-by-case basis, and except for the backlight and printed posters, will be subject to the applicable zoning regulations for the site. The statement was included in the negative declaration for the then-proposed Street Furniture Franchise in, in May of nineteen ninety-six. The City Planning Commission report regarding the application for approval of an RFP for the Coordinated Street Furniture Franchise in October of nineteen ninety-six stated that the intent of the proposed RFP is to ensure that electronically animated media are permitted only on a case-by-case basis and only in zoning districts where the zoning resolution allows them. City Council Resolution Number one thousand four, two thousand three stated that DOT should develop siting criteria for the franchise structures to be included in any RFP or the solicitation that shall address, not limited to, the permitted uses on adjacent zoning lots. The New York City Department of Transportation's request for proposals for a franchise to install, operate, and maintain bus shelters issued on March twenty-six, two thousand four stated that electronic media will be permitted only on a case-by-case basis, and except for the backlighting of printed posters, will be subject to the applicable zoning regulations for property adjacent to the site. Section four point four point two of the amended and restated franchise agreement between the City of New York and Samusa dated October one, two thousand fifteen, which is the current in place, says again that the electronic media will be permitted only on a case-by-case basis, and except for the backlighting of printed posters, will be subject to the applicable zoning regulations for property adjacent to the site. Madison Avenue from East Fifty-seventh Street to East Sixty-one Street is Zone C five-three. Madison Avenue from East Sixty-one to East Eighty-six Street is Zone C five-one. According to the zoning resolution, flashing or illuminated signs are not permitted in the zoning district. Therefore, the illuminated electronic signage prepared, uh, plan for the bus shelters on Madison Avenue are thus not permitted under the current or now the new franchise agreement. Thank you.
We're at, thank you so much. We're at time.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we'll hear from Nuhah Ansari. Please provide your full name and affiliation for the record.
Hi, my name is Nuhah Ansari, and I am testifying on behalf of Friends of the Upper East Side Historic District. Founded in nineteen eighty-two, Friends is an independent, non-for-profit organization dedicated to the preservation and celebration of the architectural legacy, livability, and sense of place of the Upper East Side. We recently learned, although with little public notice, that the NYC Department of Transportation is proposing an amendment to their franchise agreement with J.C. Deco to allow for an increase in the number of bus shelters the company installs and operates, including eleven new bus shelters proposed along Fifth Avenue on the perimeter of Central Park, which could include electronically-lit advertisement panels as part of their design. While we understand the potential benefits of installing bus shelters, we are concerned that installing these bus shelters around the perimeter of Central Park, a New York City scenic landmark and national historic landmark, would have a significant negative impact on the character and visual appeal of one of the city's most treasured public spaces. The perimeter of Central Park is part of the landmark site, and its protected features include the hexagonal asphalt pavers and granite blocks of the perimeter sidewalk, as well as the trees lining the perimeter, which are both integral parts of the park. Indeed, the double row of elm trees along Fifth Avenue are considered to be one of the nation's oldest intact stands of American Elms that survive today. The proposed bus shelters would impede the enjoyment and experience of this part of the park and would be out of keeping with the character of this historic streetscape. Comparable landmark parks in other cities, such as Regent's Park in London or the Bois de Boulogne in Paris, do not allow advertising along their perimeters, and New York City's own regulations have since nineteen fourteen banned commercial advertising within view of a public park larger than half an acre. In addition, the DOT's siting guidelines for the, for bus shelters specify that shelters must be five feet away from tree trunks, canopies, and tree pits, three feet from streetlights or traffic signals. We also understand that J.C. Deco proposes to place bus shelters along Madison Avenue within the historic district. Friends expressed their concerns, uh, concerns about the proposed bus shelters in two thousand nineteen, and even though they have been redesigned with a narrower profile, we still believe that they would obstruct views of the storefront, one of the most significant character-defining features of the avenue, as defined in the LPC's Historic District Designation Report. They would be detrimental to the pedestrian experience of Madison Avenue, whose storefronts maintain visually striking modular rhythms derived from the twenty to twenty-five-foot width of the row houses within which they are housed.
Okay, we're, we're at time. I'm, I'm sorry. Thank you, we're at time. Um, next, we'll hear from Brenda Levine. Please provide your full name and affiliation for the record.
Good afternoon, members of the FCRC. I am Brenda Levine. I am a consultant to J.C. Deco. This testimony is very personal. I was a commissioner for nine and a half years on the New York City Planning Commission. I was a member of Manhattan Community Board Six, where I chaired the Land Use Committee, and I was director of Community Relations for the city's Olympic Bid Committee, the people who suggested a stadium on the far west side of Manhattan, a stadium that now stands in New Jersey. I am no stranger to opposition. As a member of a community board, I was both a supporter and opponent. As a planning commissioner, I had the privilege of being one of a group of decision-makers. Community boards are my favorite, even when they do not like my clients' projects. Not wanting a stadium is understandable, but not wanting bus shelters is inexplicable. Historic neighborhoods are not unique to New York City. Great shopping streets and magnificent public parks are not unique to New York City, but Hamilton the Musical has it right. We are the greatest city in the world. Why would we think we do not need bus shelters and self-cleaning automatic public toilets? Cities many times older than New York with more fragile historic areas have bus shelters and, yes, automatic public toilets. A city's responsibility is to provide public services, great and small. When business improvement districts were before the planning commission, I voiced my concern that lesser-advantaged neighborhoods would not be able to have bids, and that bids would provide vital city services. I was assured that vital city services would continue to be provided by the city; they would not be the exclusive purview of the bids. Now, a bid asks you to deny bus shelters. I consider bus shelters vital. Why would anyone have to stand in the rain? Unfortunately, we can never have bus shelters at every bus stop, but the city council verbally mandated equity. The Madison Avenue bus routes are equity bus routes, taking day workers home to neighborhoods considerably less advantaged than Madison Avenue on the Upper East Side. Please grant all neighborhoods the opportunity to have bus shelters and self-cleaning automatic public toilets. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Levine. I just want to make a statement at this point. We're well, we're into the second hour of testimony. I asked at the beginning, and I was told there would be two representatives from J.C. Deco speaking. At this point, we've had three representatives from J.C. Deco, none of, not including the two who identify themselves. I would ask that the, those two obviously can testify. I would ask everyone, keep in mind the three-minute limit. I would ask also that additional J.C. Deco representatives who may be thinking of speaking, please submit written testimony. All of it will be in the public record. All of that will be available to the members of the committee and to the public for our consideration, but just in the interest of time, we have many people waiting to testify, and it's important that everyone's viewpoint be allowed to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next, we'll hear from Casimir. I apologize, I don't think I wrote your last name down.
Yeah, that's okay. Hi there.
Hi, please provide your full name and affiliation.
Sure. Casimir Zabanius, principal at Grimshaw Architects, designers of the New York City Bus Shelter Coordinated Street Franchise, also representing Juan Peral, partner, who was also on the call. Okay. So, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony. We are strongly in favor of the new bus shelters. During the mayor's initiative decades past, we improved streets for people and placemaking. Gradual changes took place to create a city more for people, high-density city successful for its occupants, not built around its roads, cars, buildings, narrow sidewalks. Improved streets and placemaking were undertaken by reviewing successful European models. Pre-qualification design excellence programs were created with an eye on the future for a city built for people, boosting social integration and activity longevity for the people. Visitors to cities at major events, for example, the Olympic Games, are always asked for their positive and negative impressions of the city or event. Without exception, public elements, benches, signage systems, waste systems, public transportation infrastructure are always right at the top of the list in these surveys. We design these bus shelters for the surroundings, clean and see-through, not to encroach facades or sidewalks. A lasting clean design that does not represent an age or aging infrastructure. These approaches work well in the ability for design to be adjusted over time, longer or shorter versions, and you need such an extended design for the rapid bus service or the slender, with modified, smaller foundations, so as to protect the below-ground pre-existing conditions, all without having to reinvent the familiar estate. They convey newness and a temporary appeal. These factors are important for such elements. The ability to create orientation identification, they convey social integrational quality of life throughout all boroughs without prejudice, ADA accessibility, and then a sense of security and favored by consistent maintenance considerations. We are strongly in favor of the boroughs receiving more bus shelters from a family of designs that can be adapted to a variety of conditions, of the same family, of the same inclusivity, the five boroughs connected through their familiar transportation elements. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in favor of the bus shelters.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear from Steve Nogre. Please provide your full name and affiliation for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Steve Nogre. I am with Sage Realty, calling on behalf of four thirty-seven Madison Avenue in Midtown Manhattan. We're submitting our verbal... Um, we're submitting our verbal comments today to strongly oppose the amendment to the Coordinated Street Furniture Franchise Agreement. We are the owner of the building located at four thirty-seven Madison Avenue and have significant concerns with the agreement, specifically with regards to the new bus shelters as defined in Schedule Y of the agreement. There are two new bus shelters proposed on Madison Avenue directly at the entrance to four thirty-seven Madison. Four thirty-seven Madison has frontage on Madison Avenue, Forty-ninth and Fiftieth Street, and has a lot area of approximately thirty-eight thousand, three hundred sixty square feet. Importantly, four thirty-seven Madison has two public plazas located on the property. In other words, approximately ten thousand square feet is dedicated to public use and enjoyment, but is privately owned and maintained. The plazas have strict requirements for fixed and movable seating, signage, plantings, lighting and much more. Moreover, due to the grading at the property, there are fixed wall benches surrounding the property line at the public sidewalk, creating a unique pedestrian walking path. We have not been provided plans of the bus shelters proposed to be located at four thirty-seven Madison and we suspect that due to the grading and amenities, it would be challenging, if not impossible, to meet the D O T specifications for bus shelters. Therefore, the agreement should not be approved as written and should be modified to remove specific bus shelter locations without prior review by D O T and the property owners. In addition to the physical constraints at four thirty-seven Madison, we also have social and security concerns. We are supporters of the benefits of public open space throughout the city. However, with these beautiful amenities at our building, it also attracts undesirable activities such as loitering, vandalism and drug use, which negatively impacts our employees, tenants and customers. Our management has respectfully handled these challenging issues, which have significantly worsened since the COVID pandemic. The agreement does not outline bus stop risk assessment considerations, crime prevention designs or policies and procedures in addressing such concerns. The public plazas at four thirty-seven Madison already draw crime and we are concerned that the bus shelters will further add to this problem. For the reasons stated, the agreement should not be approved until the bus shelter locations are reviewed by all parties to ensure that they do not negatively impact the quality of life, our residents, workers and tourists, and we continue to strive to make Midtown Manhattan the neighborhood it was before the pandemic. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. I just want to confirm that everyone who's registered has, has given an, had an opportunity to speak. I've reached the end of my list. I want to make sure I didn't miss anyone. Okay. It appears we have now heard all testimony on this calendar item.
Thank you. Would you please call the next calendar item?
New York City Mayor's Office of Contract Services, calendar item number two, in the matter of a public hearing on agency annual concession plans for fiscal year twenty twenty-four pursuant to section one-ten of the concession rules of the City of New York and proposed changes to the administrative procedures. At this remote public hearing, the clerk on behalf of the Franchise and Concession Review Committee will solicit comments about the provisions of the concession rules and planned administrative procedure changes from the vendor community, civic groups and the public at large. The F C R C shall consider the issues raised at the remote public hearing in accordance with the procedures set forth in the charter under the City Administrative Procedure Act. Uh, Bill, you're muted.
Sorry, that's not helpful. Uh, we will take testimony from the public, but first, does any member of the committee wish to make a statement on this calendar item? Okay. Uh, will you please call the first person who wishes to testify on this item?
We have heard all testimony on this calendar item.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much. Before we conclude, I just want to ask if any of the member of the agencies presenting items today have any statements for the record prior to the close of the hearing?
No, I, we have no statement.
Okay, if no one else wishes to speak, um, that concludes today's hearing. We ask that the reporter make the entire public hearing agenda, which was made publicly available and distributed at this hearing, part of the final record of the proceeding. The hearing is now closed. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.